Everyone's here. Okay, we're gonna, oh, I guess it's on. We're going to start the Tuesday, January 22nd, 2019 Special Meeting of the Governing Board at 5:34. Let it be shown that all members are here. Roll call, I just did. I need a motion to adopt the agenda.
I move to adopt the agenda.
Second.
So we are going to have a study session that will...
The vote, Mrs. Ordway.
Oh, I'm sorry. All those in favor of the study session?
Aye.
Aye. All five of us said aye. So we are going to start the study session, which is D.V.U.S.D. boundaries. I'm gonna guess that's you, Jim.
Actually, I'm gonna maybe get it started and then hand it off to some of the more qualified people for this. So President Ordway, members of the board, Dr. Finch, we appreciate your time this evening, and I always like to maybe kind of give you an idea of what we're aiming for. I think as we start this conversation about potential school boundary changes, I just wanted to give you some idea of what tonight's part is, and that goal is to try and maybe find out what are some of the guiding principles that the Governing Board would like to give us as we start this venture, because we have no preconceived notions at this point in time. We have some ideas, but we want to make sure that anything that we're going to consider, because school boundaries can be contentious, that we make sure that we know exactly what the board has the will to be able to implement, because we don't want to incite a riot as we go through the process of considering some of these changes. Some of this is going to be contained within the presentation, but tonight's effort is to really find out what those things are that the Governing Board would like to give us as what we're going to refer to as guiding principles as we look at school boundary changes. We're very fortunate, we have some experts here from both the City of Peoria and City of Phoenix, where the bulk of the growth is happening in our district, and you'll hear from them first. And then we've contracted with Dr. Skip Brown, who's going to also provide some of the guidance in terms of the process that's required per statute. Just so that we don't, just to set the record straight, we are going to take, it will take some time for us to actually put together what we're thinking will be a comprehensive look at school boundaries, and so that will take several months. It will, it'll happen throughout and during the summer months, so that, so that it doesn't, so that it looks transparent. We want to make sure that our parents and community can stay involved. So it's likely that we won't be able to bring a formal decision before the board until November or December of this calendar year, so 2019. We'd be talking about making changes for not next school year, 1920, but probably for the 2021 school year and beyond. And just as a reminder, whenever we've done, for example, high school boundaries, which is one of the things that we're going to consider, we oftentimes have done that in a phased implementation. So it usually takes multiple years to phase in high school boundary changes, and that's just to honor those students that have already started at one of our five high schools. So we're gonna get started with, any questions before we get started? Maybe I should start with that?
I have a question. Should we, hello, board members, would you like to listen to the entire presentation or ask questions, stop them and ask questions as it's being gone through?
I think it's helpful if we ask questions as we go, because it's hard to say what you said 20 minutes ago I didn't understand.
So whomever is going to be doing the presentations know that at some point you might have to stop and answer one of our questions.
And that's great. It is a study session, so that interactive capability I think would be better for all parties, just so that we don't have any loss of thought or questions as we're going through the presentations. We did allocate about an hour for this conversation. I don't know if it'll take that long or not, but we do have information to share with you. So starting us off is Ms. Deaver from the City of Peoria. It'll be followed by Mr. Badenek from the City of Phoenix, and then Dr. Skip Brown will have some additional information to share with the board.
Madam President, members of the board, can you hear me okay? All right. Thank you first for the invitation to come before the board this evening and provide an update in terms of where the City of Peoria interacts with the Governing Board's authority. We do this on a regular basis, meet with the school districts. You are an important part of our community, and so we thank the board for this opportunity to speak before you this evening. But before I get into development trends and kind of drilling down into the most focused area of the evening perhaps, I wanted to give you a snapshot of Peoria, because although it is kind of a small area that touches in the Deer Valley Unified School District's boundary, it is one of the more prominent growth areas. So just a quick shot, a snapshot of Peoria. We started off with one square mile in 1954, and basically we have grown ever since. Primarily, we have doubled in size since 1985, 1990, and we had a significant jump from 1990 to 2000. Right now, if you were to look at the city boundaries, we are very linear, very vertical in nature. The kind of central aspect of it, if you wanted to take kind of our growth population, we hit kind of the population, population centroid in Bell Road area. So if you look in that dark blue, that's kind of where we're gonna start drooling into the conversation this evening, because that's where it impacts the school district the most. So if you're familiar with the Maricopa Association of Government, they are kind of the regional planning agency for the valley. For Peoria, they have projected that we are expected to increase population by about 106,000 from about 2016 to about 2040. Why is this relevant? They take the data that we collect from what we call our general plan, or the vision of the city, and they project out the number of people based on the number of residential units that we are providing. When we are looking from a city standpoint, we have the general plan, which is our visionary document. It looks out 10 to 20 years and beyond. It determines where we set for residential, commercial growth, and so what we do is we look at 10-year increments when we are setting the vision of the city. And so that document kind of directs the framework or the policies as we go forward, and it directs growth and redevelopment. So it will control where development occurs in the coming years. One thing to note about Peoria, first two items, private property makes up about 40% of our planning area. The planning area is generally larger than the city limits, but it's our, considered our sphere of influence. Right now, if you see, the gray area is private property. That makes up about 40%. The other item I'd like to point out to you is the state trust land. So effectively, state trust land is held in trust until the point where they think the property has reached its best value, and then they will send it out to auction. It does enrich a number of agencies after that trust land is auctioned off, but why is that key? At some point in time, that land will develop. So what I want to do as I zoom into the presentation further, a good portion of the existing growth is in private property today, but as planners, we also need to be cognizant of state land will be developed at some point in the future. So that policy document that we use, the general plan, helps to shape that growth in those coming areas. So we'll keep zooming in if you will. So I borrowed a couple of slides from what we presented to our city council in 2017. They're asking some of the same questions. What are the development trends and patterns that are impacting the city as a whole? So the next couple of slides, I think, are pretty relevant for the conversation this evening. From 2012 to 2017, it just kind of outlines where we were in the single-family residential permitting activity. This would be your kind of traditional detached house, if you will. In 2017, we were projected 1,750 unit, or permits, if you will. That number, we think, is a little bit high, and I'll get into why it was a little bit, why we projected it high to begin with. But notice from 2012, we were still coming out of the economic downturn, and we were starting to pick up speed. Before that downturn, we hit close to 2,600 single-family permits. We don't expect to get towards that number going forward. We do expect that our average will be approximately 1,200 to 1,600 permits each year as we go forward. We are having a very sustained level of growth period and continue to expect that in the coming years. We focused the city, we broke it down into three categories. The one that is of primary interest this evening would be the central corridor. We do have a few master plan communities, Tierra del Rio, Meadows, Camino South, West Wing in particular, Alora Vita. Alora Vita splits between both P.U.S.D. and Deer Valley's school district, so we'll talk about that here shortly. So that was one of the areas that we looked at. So we called it the central corridor east of Aguafria. Projected number of units kind of in that map was 2,935. Population, based on number of people per household, estimated at 7,930. That's projected at five years. In the previous five years, about 56% of the growth was occurring, and I'll show that a little bit later on, but for the next five, we are expecting a good percentage of our growth to occur in that central corridor area. So kind of drilling down a little bit further is to the last five years, we had four, a little over 4,000 single-family permits that were issued. Everything that you see in the red is basically something that was permitted. That was 50% total number of permits issued citywide. What occurred at the same time, we had a lot of commercial infill, we've had some assisted living facilities, we've had medical office start to fill in, we've had some resort expansion. There's a couple of capital improvement projects that have brought infrastructure into the area, so that has also helped facilitate continued growth in this particular area. So now we go forward, and when we were projecting for our city council, we said from 2018 to 2022. So just kind of taking a step back, in the development process, we call, we have what we call the entitlement site, which is basically sets the framework and the number of units that potentially come out of a residential community. Then we get into construction documents, and then we get into verticality on the ground. So there's a number of steps in that development process. So let me pick out one item in particular. Our West Wing Development Community, total number of units that, the maximum total number of units that could come out of that area is 2,150. This is an ongoing development project. They're approximately three-quarters of the way through build-out. So we are expecting, over the next five years, another 127 single-family units to be issued during the next five years. So as you'll see, it's not close to final build-out, there's still additional room, but we do think there's going to be an interim amount of growth as it goes forward. So when we presented this in 2017, we also had a number of projects that were entitled, ready to be queued up, but hadn't been started yet. You'll see Alora Vita as one of those. They started with 0%. The 3,939 is both on the north and the south piece. There's approximately 1,900 only in the Deer Valley portion. That had not started when we presented this to council. We have seen some development activity in Alora Vita that I can touch on here shortly. So this is what we projected for our major development and the number of units. So I'll pause right here and see if you have any questions.
Mrs. Tweedy?
Is it possible for you to share this PowerPoint with us when we're done, so we can refer back to it?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes, for sure.
Ms. O'Brien?
How much of that Alora Vita development did you say fell within Deer Valley?
Approximately 1,900 units, ma'am.
Thank you.
Don, go ahead.
So in the next five years, again, we're looking at approximately 47, 46% of our total number of single-family permits in the, in the map area that you see before us. So there is still continued a lot of growth in this corridor. So I've talked about the general plan, I'm gonna give you a highlight of what that looks like right now. So what you have with kind of, as I like to call it, the Crayola mish-mash, kind of the colors, it's actually a color-coded scheme that the planners use to determine what uses go where. So we've zoomed in, you can see the Deer Valley Unified School District on there. You can notice some of the master plan communities that are called out. So when we look at the general plan, anything in yellow is typically residential, anything kind of in the orange could be more higher-density residential into apartments, or condos, or anything multifamily, a different type of smaller product in that nature. The green represents open space, the blue is actually a waterway, and purple is employment. So even though there's a number of master plan communities within the area, and this is a very high level of growth, to the north when we look up, some areas are not intended for development, but there are areas to the north that are, and so we keep that in perspective. So MAGG projected a large number of, number of units coming out of here, and we did our best in 2017, and we said we were going to hit 1,700 permits. Well, in actuality, we had 1,626, so we overestimated. We would have said about 1,500 roughly in 2018. We actually did see a drop this year of 1,292 units. So we track this on a monthly basis, we provide the information to staff so that they are aware of the applications, and we also encourage the developers to reach out and interact with Deer Valley to ensure that they're, that you are aware of projects coming on board in this particular item. So we do track this on a monthly basis. There's also various stages in the project, so that we send the applications as well. So at each phase during the development process, staff is aware of what is coming on board. They've also been included in some of our general plan efforts. We are undergoing kind of a revitalization of our general plan that sets the color and kind of identifies where growth is going to occur. Deer Valley and our other school district representatives are a part of that discussion and are included in meetings, so that they are aware as we are setting that plan going forward. They know how growth is supposed to occur. We talk about the policy framework in that regard as well. So 2018 at a glance, our key items right now, Alora Vita is still kind of kicking off and going strong. Phase one is coming out of the ground. We've had what we call master plating for phase two underway. There's also conceptual plans for phase three. These are still in the works, if you will, at each stage of the development process. Like I said, we try to inform staff in terms of what the number of units coming out appears to be. Some of the other communities are a little more mature than others. That would be Pleasant Valley, Sabulo Vista, West Wing, Sonoran Mountain Ranch, and our Rock Springs for the most part. So the one, the one kind of community that's going to be impacting the school area the most would be the units coming out of Alora Vita at this point in time. So as we're looking into the future, we also have to look both directly north compared to where our significant growth is occurring right now, and going beyond what is north of 303. This is also within Deer Valley's boundary as well. We have not had any hard conceptual looks at it, but there has been some development interest in this particular area. It is still a very high level in discussion. We may relook at this as the general plan update continues to see if the amount of employment that we have is appropriate, if the amount of mix of single-family is appropriate. We do expect there to be a diversity of uses to continue within this area. We also want to make sure that one of our core foundations, as we continue development, we need to provide infrastructure and utilize existing infrastructure in a meaningful way. So that is something that we consider as we look at the development applications moving forward. So that concludes my presentation for this evening. If there's any other questions, I'd be happy to take those.
Frank, or Ms. Frank, do you have questions?
Yeah, looking at the area around Loop 303 that's in purple and up towards Lake Pleasant, and forgive me if you gave this information and I missed it, so what types are we expecting residential development up in that area, and how much? What are your thoughts?
Madam President, Board Member Frank, so everything that you would see in kind of that yellow and darker yellow, if not orange color, those are designated in residential areas. As it goes up, it could be even into a darker brown area. So between various topography issues out there, there's some challenges on the ground with infrastructure that may better determine what the actual unit count is, but everything that you see, there is a large portion set aside for residential at this point in time.
And who owns the land now in those areas?
Primarily, that would be state land, and so this, this particular area, they would kind of identify parcels as they think it is ready for development. It would then go to auction, the successful bidder would then kind of go through and continue through the development process.
And based on previous growth, you would expect that to happen?
Yes, ma'am, at some point in time, yes.
We will be looking at new developments up in that area north of the 303 and up towards Lake Pleasant. Okay, thank you.
Ms. Tweedy?
I guess this is a little more directed at Mr. Miglerino. Is this aligning with our demographer's projections?
President Ordway, Ms. Tweedy, yes, so all the information that is readily shared within the municipalities, and is also shared with our demographer, but I think, my personal opinion is, the development that we're looking at in this particular snapshot, north of the 303 is outside of our planning window, so probably 10 years into the future. So not something we're immediately concerned about, but certainly the rest of all the development stuff, we work very closely with the municipalities, especially with the City of Peoria. They share monthly reports with us on permit draws and that, and that does coincide directly with our demographer's information. And just since it got brought up, we are still awaiting the, the report from the demographer for this year. Normally, we have it updated, you know, towards the middle of January, and just due to them taking a little bit more time preparing the actual document this year, it's not quite ready at this point. But we will be sharing that with the board once that is finalized.
Dr. Finch, do you want anything?
Thank you.
Appreciate your time.
Okay, now we can hear from the City of Phoenix and some of the happenings that are ongoing within their boundaries.
Madam President, members of the board, Joshua Bednerick, City of Phoenix Planning and Development Department. I echo Lori's comments in thanking you for the opportunity to talk to you and collaborate with you about how we're growing in northwest Phoenix. See if we can get PowerPoint fired up there. I'll take the moment to thank Vice President O'Brien for serving as part of our Deer Valley Village Planning Committee. We are blessed with a really robust infrastructure of residents and business owners coming together and collaborating with us throughout the planning process with our village system, and so it's, you know, at least one night out of the month, and we give them a lot of homework. So Vice President O'Brien, thank you very much for your service to the city. We really appreciate it. Okay, so growth for Phoenix, and how does that align with what you guys are doing? Here's just a context map of the Deer Valley Boundary along with the City of Phoenix Boundary. The Deer Valley Boundary there is kind of that light sandy color. You can see it captures a good chunk of northwest Phoenix. Four villages there, we have 15 total, so that's the Rio Vista, North Gateway, Desert View, and Deer Valley Villages. But how do we plan for growth? Much like Peoria and all the other cities, we have a general plan. Our color scheme follows essentially the same color scheme as Peoria. Yellow is residential, green is, is open space, and then our purple is employment. So very similar to what Lori just walked you through, but it just provides us a starting point for evaluating growth and planning for growth in the future. I'll circle back on this map here in a sec. The blue outline is the Deer Valley Boundary, so you can see how that aligns. That, that blue boundary, your boundary will be a constant in the slides forthcoming. Okay, so zoning, how's the area zoned right now? Good chunk of the land in question, and you'll see why, is still zoned residential, even though, as you saw on the previous map, there are large swaths of area that we have designated for employment. Much of that, as you'll see, is owned by the State Land Department and would need to go through the rezoning process. And when that does, there'll be certainly opportunities to collaborate and notification provided to all stakeholders, including this school district. So Sonoran Preserve, we have been aggressive in years past in acquiring a lot of the land out here for the purposes of preserve within the school district's boundaries. That's over 15,000 acres of Sonoran Preserve that's been acquired. State land, as Lori mentioned, one of the larger landowners in this area, and they've got close to 100,000 acres just in your boundary alone. This is an important map, and a map that we're probably gonna need to come back and talk to you a little bit about. As Lori mentioned, one of the things that we do to manage growth is our impact fee program. The map here is draft, and I stress that, it is draft. We are working with an ad hoc group of constituents and stakeholders to evaluate what the sequencing of development will be out here. It does, though, provide, I think, a glimpse of insight from us on where we think growth will be occurring based on existing infrastructure. And so I think for the purposes of what you guys are about to dive into, this map will be helpful, but please know that it may change. The, the light orange, sort of the middle gradient color, which probably is, is the area where we're, we're projecting where the growth is going to happen, basically because there's infrastructure there now. It's gonna be the easiest for growth to align with that. And so, again, draft map, but I think it will be helpful for you, as you see, and I'll reiterate, you'll see that a lot of the permit activity that we're experiencing in Phoenix is kind of aligning with that corridor. All right, so where is growth occurring? This is a map of employment within the school district boundaries. No surprise, along the I-17 corridor, along the I-17 and 101 interchange, near the Deer Valley Airport, a really strong employment cluster, but you are beginning to see that creep up along the North Valley Parkway, the North Black Canyon Corridor, up towards Carefree Highway. Again, that kind of aligns with where we're projecting the growth will continue to go. As more employment comes in, the houses will typically follow. Building permits, just an idea of where investment is occurring in the area, and we've kind of broken them out by the, the value of the permit to give you an idea where a lot of that is going. But you can see that spine that kind of goes from Carefree Highway and kind of starts creeping down to Deer Valley Airport, we're seeing a lot of permit activity in there. Again, that aligns with where we're expecting to continue to see growth because the infrastructure's These are single-family home permits just for 2018. They were kind of small on the map, so I just circled them there. We had 578 in 2018 within the district, and you again see, it's really following that North Valley Parkway. We are seeing some out Pinnacle Peak, Happy Valley Road area as well. Residential rezoning cases, so they haven't quite pulled the permit yet, but they probably will soon. In 2018, we had five cases. Those are outlined, those are highlighted in the circles, around 250 dwelling units. We do have two active cases that are proceeding through our public hearing process, or about to proceed through our public hearing process, so that number certainly could change, it's just what they're proposing, but a little over 1,600 dwelling units, and those are the areas marked with the star. So where will growth continue? As I mentioned earlier, again, this is the general plan. As I mentioned earlier, again, this is the general plan. I kind of highlighted out via that rectangular box there on the map, that's really that North Valley Parkway corridor designated, a lot, good chunk of that is designated residential. The North Gateway Village Core is there, we're seeing employment growth in there, and we anticipate continuing to see the bulk of our residential growth in there as well. Madam President, that concludes my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Do you have questions? Mrs. O'Brien?
I just wanted to make sure we'd also get a copy of your presentation as well.
You guys have.
Okay, great, thank you.
Mrs. Reese?
Oh, just one question. I sit on North Gateway.
Oh, thank you for your circle.
Oh, you're welcome. Would you be willing to share this with our committee, this presentation? Just because we are hearing, we saw the MEQ in 480, and we see some of the other rezoning cases, and the people on our committee are hesitant to say yes to rezoning cases without understanding where the growth is happening within the district because they want to make sure that the district has schools in place.
Absolutely, we'd be happy to.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, with that, President Ordway, members of the board, I'd like to introduce Dr. Skip Brown, who, you know, thankfully has a great deal of experience in this type of endeavor. And we were very fortunate that he is willing to help us as we, again, start this discussion. So, Dr. Brown?
Tweedy, I am Skip Brown. Just a little background, I come to you from the United States Army. I spent 22 years finishing as a colonel in the field artillery. And when I retired, I found two things, one, I was too young to retire, and secondly, there's not a great call for cannoneers in the private sector. So I had to re-career and find something else to do. And the closest thing to combat I could find, of course, was public education.
You came to the right place.
Yes, indeed. I went to work at Paradise Valley Unified School District, thinking it was a small community just north of Camelback Mountain. And I think you probably know that that small community is in the Scottsdale Unified School District, not the Paradise Valley School District. While I was there, I was the, I'm ahead of myself, I was the retired Assistant Superintendent for Support Services and Planning. And so as Jim has said, I've done some of this before, and my therapist says I should get over it any time. After retiring from Paradise Valley School District, I became a Senior Project Manager for Valley Schools Management Group. I also operate Brown Proprietary Soul Consulting. This is for really small districts that don't have a place in Valley Schools, and they are all over the state, and everybody has the same requirements that this larger sophisticated districts have, but sometimes don't have the staff. So I have a chance to go out to places you probably didn't even know existed in the state of Arizona. And I'm also adjunct faculty at Northern Arizona University. This is what you call a failed retiree, I just can't seem to get it right, but I do enjoy what I'm doing. My education, I got my Bachelor's of Art from University of Arizona, go Cats, got my Master's from Webster State University, go dictionaries, or whatever they were, and my PhD from Arizona State University, go Devils. So I do have the strangest-looking set of golf clubs you've ever seen with all the head covers, with Sparky and Wilbur coexisting peacefully. Purpose, as I understand it, and by the way, tonight, obviously interruptions, questions, absolutely better than all right, because this is what we're looking for tonight, is information and feedback to make sure that what I think I'm doing and what you think I'm doing are the same thing. So I think we're going to analyze the current attendance areas and develop appropriate alternatives using specific guiding principles. And the last, the real operative sentiment, and that is the guiding principles. If you're familiar with decision matrices and things like that, the notion is to get a series of courses of action, and then put the asset test against various valuerative criteria, and that's the guiding principles. We'll talk more about that in a second. I think part of it also is to coordinate and coordinate the progress of the study with stakeholders. It's been my experience that whenever we try to do a top-down redistricting or reboundring and things like that, it's never as effective as when we do bottom-up. So we want to make sure we keep our stakeholders informed as we go, totally transparent, telegraph our punches, it works better that way. And then finally, we want to develop as many courses of action that will support or eliminate the overcrowding and facilitate the long-range planning. Those are two very different things, but they need to work together. And also look at some other things that may go in there. So we have uneven distribution of students right now. Using this based on the current applied economics demographic study the district has, it's being underdone and should be, the new one should be done any day now. But this is all based on last year's study. But according to that study, elementary schools right now are about 75.2% of the school facilities board capacity. And I want to qualify that in just a moment. The school facilities board determines capacity based on square feet of building space. That may be a way to do it. It's a way to do it, it certainly puts a peg in the ground, it gives us something we can talk about, but in terms of being accurate, it's not very. The space could be filled with preschools, which wouldn't conclude in that, it could be filled with a room with two or three special needs kids, and it could be a full-capacity room, and so on. So it gives us something to talk about in terms of percentage, but it's not necessarily a hard and fast rule. However, you have three elementary schools that exceed this capacity in 2019, 2020. You have another one that exceeds it by 2022, 2023. Then you have two elementary schools that are less than 50% of capacity in this very year. So we have an uneven distribution else. One elementary school is less than 50% in a couple more years. So we want to take a look at, how can we do that? How can we comb that out? And I'll pause momentarily and say, you know, just because an elementary school is small doesn't mean it's bad or even inefficient, it's simply small. But we want to take a look at it. If we're going to keep a smaller elementary school, we'll do it by design as opposed to by exception. Does that make sense? Middle schools are about 73.8%, and that is a pretty, looks pretty good. Your high schools, however, present an interesting and unique problem. It's going to be something the district's going to have to deal with fairly soon. You're about 89.3% of the listed capacity of the school facilities board. However, two high schools right now are right at the max, or over the max perhaps. I'll show you the projections in a moment. One high school will in the following year exceed it, and still another in 24, 25. Full high schools are problematic, and they're probably the single most difficult thing a district has to do is to build additional high schools and define those kinds of things. It's something we have to take a look at and think about because it's a tough job. It's toughest if you're in a district with only one high school and split to a second one, that's crazy time, but it's still not any mean feat for a district, even with as many high schools as Deer Valley does. This is the enrollment table from the existing study. I put a big dark black line down the middle of it showing the, to the left of it is 20, this year and earlier, although the column directly left to that black line is actually projected numbers. Your actual numbers are a little different from that, we've got those as well. Down the left-hand column of that slide is the SFP capacity, it's found online at the state. These are the ones with the blue arrows coming up, the schools that are under 50% right now and getting that way. The ones in the red are ones that are hitting capacity, nearing or exceeding capacity in the next year or two. That's just sort of a graphic representation of what I said in the earlier slide. So far, so good? And we'll take a look at the middle and high schools, same kind of story. There's your SFP capacities, and those are the schools right now that are full, they are full, over capacity. You can always squeeze more kids in. In fact, I was talking to a group, one of the feeder groups today, and I suggested we could look at bunk desks, and they didn't think that was a very good idea. But there's always a way to deal with the problem, but we need to make sure that we have a long-range solution, not just the short-range make it happen. Standard A will go over very shortly. And Barry Goldwater will join the crew in a couple of years after that. That's something that has to stay on the bed. Those are very expensive to build, they take up an awful lot of land, usually around 60 acres, and right now they're building the high schools out at around $120,000 to $175,000, multiple millions of dollars.
Awesome. Take it.
Yeah, we'll take it.
I did one for $170,000. Come talk to me, we'll be using the Joe Rapile School of Construction, GP medium pence.
Sorry, could I ask a question before you move on?
Yes, ma'am.
Dr. Brown, please. And I think this might be a Mr. Miglerino question. When we look at those Barry Goldwater projected numbers, do those take into account how many students open enrollment to other districts, or is that, or other, not to other districts, other schools within our district? Or is that just based on projected growth and the enrollment that should be there if all the kids kind of could attend there?
President Ordway, Ms. O'Brien, great question. So the demographer does take into account the trends of open enrollment by school? And so we do attendance versus reside calculations for every school. So every school is listed down both the X and Y axis of this matrix that then determines... So we know not only where the students, what attendance boundary they reside in, we also know which attendance boundary they attend. So we know where the trend is, where students are coming from and to other schools. That is used in determining how much growth we project, assuming a very similar trend. So unless there were a significant change, and that could be a change of personnel, it could be a change of program, it could be a change of new development that might be, you know, close by, in close proximity, like right around a boundary line, those types of things do affect that over time. But what we see is that whatever that trend is over time, without any other variable, it typically will maintain itself over time as well, again, assuming all things being equal. And so that's how they include that in projections moving forward as well.
Okay, thank you so much for that clarification. Thank you, Dr. Brown.
I'd like to add a little bit to that also. The outfit that does this work has a very sophisticated algorithm. They'll use census data, they'll use the building data, they coordinate with developers and so on. But if you talk to Rick Bremer, who runs the place, he'll say the one thing he can't model, he doesn't know how to model, is parental choice. He hasn't, he says he's working on clairvoyance, it hasn't happened yet, and it's not likely to. So that's the big, that's the wild card that's very difficult to project, and that isn't in there, but everything else he can possibly throw in the mix generally is. They're not too bad, they're not too far, they usually come in pretty good. Okay, the next steps. I am participating right now in regional meetings with the feeder groups from each of the high schools, because I think the success of this program, as Mr. Miglerino had already mentioned, is going to be implementation over time, but maybe from grassroots, from the ground up. That way, we're not some kind of, you know, from the top-down forced. We want to make sure we get a good solution, that we get input from all our building principals and from their communities, to make sure that we don't do something silly and make a draw a line in exactly the wrong place, which can be done. We can make the numbers all work, but what we have to remember, because these aren't numbers, these are children, these are families, and so we have to make sure we're very careful about that. And the way they'll hold us accountable will be those building principals, because that's what they do and that's what they care about. So we're looking, I'm talking right now about priorities and preferences from the building principals. I'm also trying to understand previous commitments, promises, and the other sacred cows in their communities. And we've got a dialogue going now, I've got emails from all, and we're sending back and forth. So I'm very interested in using that as kind of a, as a knowledge base and a way to communicate. We also want to facilitate, and that's one of the main thrusts of tonight's meeting, is the facility development of dividing principles for selecting and evaluating tenancy. How do we know we have a good attendance area? What makes something as good for the district? It's not, one of my favorite things when I'm teaching one of my master's classes, there's really three values we have to think about. One is efficiency, that's doing things the right way, doing things as cheap as possible. But then we also think about effectiveness, that's not doing things the right way, but doing the right things. And the third is equity. Those are three values we have to value and we have to balance. We have to look at those kinds of things. We'll talk about, more about the guiding principles in just a second. Mr. Miglerino and I will meet with Applied Economics, in fact, we're going to probably go to their offices, sit down, and using his computer, perhaps start doing some wargaming and see what we can do in terms of developing various options, what kind of boundaries, answer the question, for the same token, meet our guiding principles. And we do that as a very interactive thing, and probably pretty quick, I would think, as soon as he gets his study done, whether he likes it or not. We will analyze and propose attendance areas using these guiding principles. And of course, we develop for community input. We want to make sure we get everybody on board to understand what we're doing. And we'll continue to present what I call in-progress reviews. This won't be come back and see you in six months and give you a recommendation, this is going to be no surprise. These things in this study should be no surprise to anybody in this community, to ho-hum that old thing when we finally get to the point where we make a recommendation. And we'll plan a recommendation for, and we say, I say school year 2019, 20, I don't think there'll be very much unless there's some real obvious low-hanging fruit. Other than that, it's going to be past that time, because I think it's too late to try and implement anything for next school year in terms of substantive, large implementations that will help this overcrowding. So I put some examples of guiding principles, this is where I'd like to turn this into a two-way conversation, I know it's difficult, but some of the things that occurred to me, that whatever the problem is, whatever we do has to solve the problem, has to balance the schools, has to give us the kind of counting. I don't want to, I would hate to be standing, sitting here and have some parent getups that have been to three different schools or four different schools, because you keep moving the boundaries. We have to make sure we solve the problem and they'll just continue to solve it, both in the near term as well as the long-range types of solutions. Whatever we do has to be flexible, we have to make sure we're understanding, we're not dealing with numbers, or again, we're dealing with people, communities, families, children, and so on. I want to have contiguous boundaries. There's nothing worse than trying to explain why you're picking up kids in front of a school and driving them to another, or little islands of people here and there. It's difficult, we want to avoid that. Proximity and convenience. If we're busing kids five or six miles to a school where there's one in closer proximity, whether it's one of our schools that joined district school or charter school, many parents will choose to go to the closer school. We want to make sure we keep the proximity value in mind. It's got to be sustainable over time. I'd like to make this as least amount of impact we possibly can. It needs to support future operations. This would include the kind of growth we heard about tonight in both the cities, because we know we're going to be adding additional schools, and we want to make sure as we build these additional schools, how do we open them? What makes sense? Natural impediments, if we have a wash, if we have a road, if we have any kind of feature that would divide part of the attendance area, we have to make sure we honor that. We want to make sure we understand our open enrollment policy, this goes back to the fear that we really don't know what parent choice is going to be. So we have to make sure we're as flexible as we possibly can to facilitate our open enrollment and make sure our policy also facilitates our community. Obviously, we want to keep our families and our communities together, and we want to accommodate new programs, special programs, traditional schools and that sort of thing. And it needs to be phased in. Those are some of my thoughts and some of the thoughts I've picked up from our principals. I was a chance to say, anything occur to you? I know this has been hit to you here, have a bucket of water, take a sip from this fire hose, what do you think?
We're used to that. We like fire hoses.
Ms. Tweedy, did you want to speak?
I just had a question, how do we know we're building more schools? I don't know about this.
We are building USAA in two years, so...
We're building, no, just the one we approved. We're not planning on building even more schools, are we?
We haven't, we'll wait and see what the study says, so no, we don't have any plans in the future.
Okay, I thought, building I didn't know about, thanks.
I think, you know, your question is excellent. There's no plan here to build more schools, certainly I wouldn't make any recommendation like that. But clearly, as Peoria develops and as the City of Phoenix develops, and more people move in, there'll be a need for more schools. And that'd be, that's a topic for another issue, but sooner or later, that's bound to come up. It just will.
What is the timeframe that you have for the regional meetings? What are we looking at to implement this?
I've already done, actually I did one today and two previous, so there's two more I need to get to in the next few weeks. But those are just the first, kind of introducing myself, saying, here's what we're doing, talking about the kind of things we're talking about tonight, and then we'll come back as we get, as we get something more substantive to take their time with and say, look, here's a possible solution, what do you think? Then that will be coming up in the next, probably, I'd say, next month or maybe the month after that.
So when you say regional meetings, are we using the high school regions?
Yes, yes.
Is that what you're referring to? So how many have you already hit?
I've done three, two more to go.
Okay, which ones are left?
I think Deer Valley region is left, and I think...
Boulder Creek region?
Boulder Creek, probably.
So you're...
I'm just, just when they were meeting, I said, can I come sit and take part of your meeting for a few minutes?
And then, and then who attends those meetings?
All the principals and assistant principals show up. We had a really good turnout of around 12 or so folks per meeting. We've had good conversation, and we try to keep it, you know, light, and so there's no worries, because I'm more interested in the information and what they're worried about. And today I heard some things like, I'm worried that we're not counting preschool, because these numbers you see up there don't include the preschool population, because Mr. Bremer has no way of doing that, they're not a part of your student, part of the student database.
Well, other than the special needs preschool, they're not counted.
Special needs preschool and any of the other programs, they're concerned that we're not going to ignore those, and of course, we will not. They need to be addressed based on the district needs.
President Ordway, if I could just answer your question. So we have Deer Valley High School and Berry Goldwater regions are left to be completed.
That's right.
Mrs. Reece?
When is the timeframe for other stakeholder groups to start meeting with you or to start putting in their two cents?
The next step in my mind in that regard, once we have a chance to get some, kind of a straw man or straw men of possible options and things, get that out there, at least talk to people, and that would be probably within a month or so. Until we get, until Applied Economics finishes their work, I'm reluctant to do any work we just have to undo later, but it should be fairly soon. With implementation, obviously not this year, but in years to come, literally years to
I would like to advocate for the guiding principle that we come up with a plan that doesn't require us to build new schools unless our total student population changes, because we keep building new schools when our total student population has not changed, and we have to come up with the money to maintain them, and we don't have the money for other things. And if you look at our Auditor General's report, we're $84 per student higher than our peer districts on land and building, and that was before the board approved to build this latest school. And if you calculate that by our student population, I mean, that's, that's like two and a half million dollars that we're spending more than our peer districts. So I would like to see us come up with a plan that wouldn't require us to build new schools, but make better use of the schools we have.
I can't help but agree with you 100%. And it's not building the schools, not just the square footage, it's also the acquisition of the land, bringing in the utilities that go to the land and so on. So it's a very expensive proposition and time-consuming. It's, it's one of those things where if we can avoid that, we need to.
Mrs. O'Brien?
And I'm not sure who to direct this to, but, but it is concerning to me that, I understand why we don't have our preschool numbers in there. I would like to see us look at that. I think that preschool is the new kindergarten. Before, it was that we needed to have full-day kindergarten to capture our students, and if we got them, then generally, we would keep them. And I think that preschool, that has bumped back to preschool. And I know that in some of our regions and at some of our schools, preschool is really popular, and we don't have room at those schools. Let's say at Stetson Hills, for example. They're at capacity. They have a great capture rate of their students, according to the report. I think they're at 90%. And so I'd like to see if there's some way to evaluate those numbers and look at that being, I don't know if that's a special program, if that's a magnet, or how we look at that, but to me, if we can get those students, and, and not just the students, but the families as preschoolers, I think that we will increase our, our capture rate, which is one of the things I know that, that you've been looking at, Dr. Finch.
Yes, and I know our, our preschool numbers are not included in our square foot patterns as well, so we have very aggressive and accommodating community education program and preschool program, so we have a lot of people using our spaces that are not in our books, so that is true. We, we have had this discussion before. We can get that stuff for you. The, if I can move us along, the, because we're running out of time, the, I think I, I wrote a couple examples for potential guiding principles, so if there's a way that we could, you could maybe email me yours, and I can facilitate it, and we can bring Skip back for another round as well. But there's something to think about, or how far down the trail you want to go tonight? We can talk about that.
Well, my, my opinion is that we could probably wrap this portion of it up, knowing that we're going to think about what guiding principles are, knowing that we've already gotten some examples, get a little bit of chance to digest it, and then have another meeting with you. Yes, Ms. Frank?
I would agree. There's quite a lot to digest here and a lot to talk about, and very few minutes left. I did want to just jump in and say I think it's important that our plan is sustainable over time. That is one guiding principle that jumped out at me. And I think it's also, as you said, important to remember that we're dealing with not just numbers, but people, families and kids. Thank you, Mrs. Ordway.
And Deer Valley is one of the most chartered school districts in Arizona, which changes the game for us as well, because we have to be competitive in our market, and if our market is exploding north and west, we need to think of a plan that can deal with those two issues that are popping up as we speak. And don't, as you heard from the two speakers tonight, they're not slowing down.
So I guess when you're working on this, including information from community schools on our number of preschools that we have available, and also perhaps looking at the number of preschoolers that we have. Sonoran Foothills closed theirs because there were, there was no more room, so they're being serviced at Sunset Ridge. So if you could also get that kind of information, that would be very helpful. And that would be the, the community at preschools.
Yes, I understand. Yeah, I think it's, a room is used, whether it's used for a typical classroom or preschool, it's still a room that's used and reduces the capacity of the building. We need to make sure we know where they are and why they are, and how do we service the community?
Right, because it'd be awesome if we had enough room for all the preschoolers that